To emergency management, Governor Wallace has declared a state of emergency. In response to the state of emergency and in accordance with Minnesota Statute Chapter thirteen D point zero two one, Planning Commission members and applicant may participate by telephone or other electronic means for this meeting.
Okay, Deb, do they need to mute themselves until they speak to, okay? If everybody can mute yourself, otherwise we're going to get the feedback till unless you want to say something, then you can just come back on. So we'll start with item number one, which is the consider a conditional use permit submitted by Milk and Honey Ciders. We'll start with the staff report given by Heidi.
Okay, to consider an amendment to conditional use permit P dash zero zero seven two six one, submitted by Milk and Honey Ciders St. Joseph, Minnesota, on behalf of Custom Properties LLC, Cold Spring, Minnesota. According to sections four point eight, six point five, and nine point three point five B of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number four thirty-nine, pavilion and storage structure hold up to six special events. Increase the maximum capacity for special events to nine hundred ninety-nine people in the agriculture forty zoning district. Located in Lot one block one, land of Milk and Honey in part of the southwest quarter, southeast quarter in section eight, township lying north of County Road fifty-one. This request was continued from the April sixteenth Planning Commission meeting at the request of the applicant to do some amendments to the to their original request. The request now includes to add the structures per the original plan, but with some added walls. Guests onsite to nine hundred and ninety-nine for a maximum of six times per year and all restrictions of the current conditional use permit. I'm just gonna briefly go through some of the concerns and some of the issues that were brought up previously from the April meeting until now. One concern that came up was the number of guests onsite. Requesting is to have six special events up to nine hundred and ninety-nine people per year and then an additional six special events so that can be up to three hundred people. They purchased additional land for parking to accommodate the additional guests and they will have suitable bathroom facilities for the guests. Hours are still going to be limited. They're not requesting a change into their hours of operation. Are going to notify the county and notify the neighboring residents when they plan on having these special events. Another concern was erosion on the property. Questions have been delineated. They have come up with a stormwater management plan, which is required to be implemented by twenty twenty-one, so that will happen. Another concern was traffic on fifty-one. And they are working to trim some trees to make their sign and drive away more visible. Possibly putting up some directional signs along the highway, working with county highway department for that. The proposal proposing will be further away from the homes and oriented in a different direction. To hopefully help minimize some of that sound, they will be working with a companion engineer to make sure the noise standards are also met. And possibly planting additional trees and shrubs to help block some of that sound. They will be switching to a dimmable light. You change the angle in the western key light that they have. Seen that this occurs, but they will continue to see no parking signs. Public concerns around alcohol, the complete two undercover stings. They've always passed and they have not received any complaints for this facility. Recommended conditions, if the Planning Commission recommends approval. There are twelve conditions, so I'll go through those now. Number one, the state accessibility code is required to be met and a certificate of occupancy shall be submitted once it's issued. Number two, the maximum number of special events per year shall be twelve. One of the special events may be up to three days in duration. All other special events shall not exceed one day. Maximum capacity for special events shall be three hundred people on the property at any one time, except for six times per year. When the maximum capacity for special events shall be nine hundred and ninety-nine people on the property at any one time. Regular hours where the business is open to the public shall be from eight AM to ten PM Monday through Sunday. For special events, business hours shall be eight AM to twelve AM. Any outdoor music shall be allowed from eight AM to ten PM. A list of special events and dates shall be provided to the county, a minimum of thirty days prior to the event. Number three, a minimum of two portable toilets per one hundred and fifty people shall be available during special events. Number four, shall obtain appropriate licenses from the department or Minnesota Department of Ag. Number five, maintain a farm winery license from the state of Minnesota. Number six, an approved erosion control and stormwater management plan is required, including a financial guarantee of one hundred and twenty-five percent of the site grading and erosion and sediment control costs shall be implemented by June fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. Stormwater facilities shall be maintained in perpetuity. Release of any portion of the financial guarantee is contingent on approval from a professional engineer that the as-built conditions meet original design specifications and a site visit by county staff. Number seven, sign visibility shall be maintained. Recommend the county board consider a resolution to install no parking signs as determined by the county highway department. A blue informational sign should also be considered. Provide notice to all neighboring property owners within a quarter mile of the property when outdoor music will be present a minimum of fourteen days prior to the event. When outdoor music is occurring on the property, the state noise standard shall be met at the property line. Number ten, lighting on the property shall be directed to stay on the property. Eleven, parking areas shall be installed or made available per the approved plans. And number twelve, a severe weather plan shall be submitted to the department for outdoor events.
Yes, I am here, ladies and gentlemen, sorry. Hello.
There.
Yep, can you hear me? You think we?
There you are. Here except for Mike Farrell is not was not able to address today. So let's do a. No one but me. No, I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can the members hear me? Yep, they can hear me. What we're going to do now is do a roll call of the members that visited the site. So I'll call your name and if you visited the site this month, then just say yes. If you did not, then say no. Jason Weinerman.
Yes, I did.
Sean Blackburn.
Yes.
Jason Crone.
Yeah.
Ken Masman.
Yes.
Rich Blankish.
No, I did not.
Commissioner Persky. Commissioner Persky.
Yes.
Did you visit the site?
Yes.
Thank you. And I visited the site, Jeff Bertram. Now we'll have the, we had the staff report, we did the roll call. And now we'll have the applicant. Add anything they want to add. Are they doing that remotely or are they coming in here? They're going to do it remotely. Okay, so the applicants, please identify yourself by name and address. And and then if you want to add anything to the staff report, please do so at this time. We have the applicants. I'm going to wait for staff to get the applicants with us.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, can you?
Yes.
All right, this is, good evening, this is Peter Gilitzer. One four zero six five Hummingbird Lane, Cold Spring.
Okay, welcome. Is there anything you want to add to the staff report?
Yes, please, I'd like to take a moment to elaborate on some things. Again, this, my name is Peter Gilitzer. I'm the cider maker and one of the owners at Milk and Honey. So as you know, we're updating, we're requesting an update to our conditional use permit. And the request includes two main items, additional space and accommodations for our guests and then ability to increase our guest count for six times a year. We started this business in rural Stearns County in two thousand and eleven to share our passion for cider and apples in the place we were raised and raising our families. The people, the landscape and the business environment has allowed us to flourish. And much of our success is due to the agricultural and business friendly environment that is Stearns County. It's been a privilege making a living here. What started in a garage by hardworking people who did not come from means has grown into a successful fixture in the county. Across the region, we hear about the positive experiences Minnesota Minnesotans have had with our cider and visiting our ciderry. From first dates overlooking the valley, neighborhood barn raising fundraisers, marriage proposals and live music on a beautiful summer evening. We strive to provide a positive experience for our guests. We have hosted nearly a hundred tour groups educating people on apple cider making through an interactive experience. We have realized the exact vision when we came to this board over three years ago to get the permission to build the St. Joseph's Ciderie. We believe it has been fully realized and provides the economic opportunity and amenities for the community. As we discussed, people want to live and work in an area that has interesting local activities such as a farm ciderie. And we thank the board for recognizing this back in two thousand and seventeen. The two structures we are requesting to build are as follows. The first is a shade and storage structure. About half the year will allow us to provide some protection from inclement weather for some of our activities. One anecdote is the classic examples. Last autumn, we were hosting a pumpkin fundraiser in support of Centricare Children's Program. The interest from the community was high and we only have twelve hundred square feet to host them. The weather was chilling. The kids were waiting in line to pick out and decorate their pumpkins. That's exactly why we're building this new facility. We want to have the opportunity to better serve our customers. We're looking for experiences just like this. The second half of the year, this structure will allow us to store equipment and inventory, keeping the grounds neat and tidy. During the harvest season, we are bursting at the seams with apple bins and workers and we need the additional space to continue to meet the demand for our product. The second structure is an open air stage and pavilion. Our patio sessions concert series, which is comprised of eight to ten local musical acts. It's very popular and something we want to continue to do. People enjoy sitting on a lawn chair, enjoying the summer evening with a cider and some good local music. People bring out the whole family and let the kids run around the grounds and the orchards. When those, the other times when those patio session concerts are not occurring, that open air stage will provide a quiet space for family outings or picnics. We get inquiries every week, people looking for space and we'd like to realize the opportunity. The second change we are requesting is to allow more than our current max of three hundred people to be onsite at one time. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we have nowhere near three hundred people onsite. Our indoor retail space seats fifty. And during the warm weather months, we can fit another seventy-five on the patio. And this is more than adequate and those are the, you know, the fire code regulations. There are times, however, though, when the weather cooperates and people want to be outside in the rural Stearns County landscape. We want to be able to realize this opportunity and accommodate our guests. We are asking for six times a year to be allowed to exceed our current capacity of three hundred, but no more than the Stearns County ordinance surrounding large gatherings, which is triggered at nine ninety-nine. We have been working on this CUP since last autumn. However, in March, we received some additional information on some concerns the neighbors have with our request. We've had phone conversations. We did a Q and A with the township and the neighbors. We consulted with the staff and we have developed some action items. The staff report in your packet and the table really highlights the issues and then the actions that we are committed to doing. Many of those we've already done. I will, one of the conditions was getting a second sign. We had purchased that from the highway department already. The other thing I do want to do want to stress is the public safety concerns around alcohol. The sheriff's department has not received any complaints relating to noise or alcohol to date. They've never been out there. We've been fortunate to never have an issue and we take pride in that. Twice a year, we do, they do undercover stings. And we always send our staff to their annual alcohol training that the sheriff department puts on. We, the other thing I want to address is the sound from the outdoor music. It sounds like the majority of the concerns from neighbors are surrounding outdoor music. And I think we've really done some concrete work on that. Moving the stage to the other side of the building away from the neighboring homes. There'll be no more deflection of the sound off the building that would would deflect it over there. We are changing the direction to north, which is essentially Interstate ninety-four. There's no homes over there. We're adding sidewalls. One of the neighbors suggested that. We're adding sidewalls to the stage and pavilion to direct sound away from the neighboring homes. And then the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has a state noise standard. Okay, and we can use that to make sure that the noise is within those guidelines at the property boundary. We're also committing to notifying the neighbors via mail in fourteen days in advance of the music. The timing of the music is the same. There's no late night music. The rest of those items, I think, were covered well in the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any more questions. So in conclusion, we look forward to growing opportunities and amenities of our agrotourism operation. We look forward to celebrating this important historical beverage and doing so in a responsible manner. We strive to continue to meet the demands of our community and take our responsibility of balancing business opportunity, guest experience and being respectful neighbors seriously. And we thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. At this point, Planning Commission members, anybody have any questions before we go to the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, this is Jason Weinerman. Just one quick question. You had six events at the nine ninety-nine and then six events at the three hundred level. And you asked for one three-day event. Is your three-day event, do you think that's going to be at the nine hundred ninety-nine level or the three hundred person level?
Peter?
Mr. Chair, to date, we have not held a multiple date event. That is a holdover from our two thousand and seventeen permit. And I, I can't imagine what what that would look like at this point. It could be three hundred. It could be nine ninety-nine.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members before the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Blankish, your question regards, is to go to staff or to? You quote their state about the state of Minnesota's noise level or sound level at the property line. Does anyone out there know what that sound level is? I mean, what do they go by a decibel level and what is it that they go by? Thank you.
I think staff probably would know that. We've, we've dealt with that before, so we know what the level is or we can find out what the level is. We've dealt with that before. Angie Berg is going to address that.
No. Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I could answer that also.
Let's see if we can get Angie online. If we can't, then you can. You want to try that again, Angie? Nope, they're not coming on. Okay, Peter, go ahead.
So the noise volume at the property boundary is sixty-five decibels in residential areas or seventy-five decibels at in agricultural areas. So the the, the standard at the PCA references for sixty-five is the, the sound of a conversation level. That's sixty-five decibels.
Okay, and we've dealt with that. I know with mining operations, we've dealt with those standards and the sheriff's departments aware of those levels as well. Are you with us now, Angie? Nope, she's not, but she's nodding an affirmative that that's what the standards were, so. Any other questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Blankish again on the sound. Who wanted her to have during the concerts that are going to go on there? Make sure they're within the sixty-five decibels.
On the government side, the way this has happened before, when we've dealt with this is someone will call the complaint. The sheriff's department responds to the complaint and then they have their meters and they check it to see if that's, you know, above the, the levels or not. What they're going to do onsite, Peter, that's probably a good question to ask you. Are you going to monitor it onsite prior to potentially getting a complaint?
Mr. Chair, yeah, so that noise standard provides a worksheet where you basically fill it out and we'll keep that on file. You have the date and then you go in various directions from the the origin of the sound and you, you take your sound decibel meter and you record those. That's something that we can absolutely do and is a good tool.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Blankish again. The reason I brought it up is because that seemed to be one of the important issues with the residents that moved to the area and what cider house has been operating at. So that's my question somewhat.
Sure. Yep. Any other questions from commission members at this time? If not, we'll go to the public hearing. I understand we have two people that are online. Let's do that first and then we've got a whole bunch of written, some of which we've already received, but Heidi will do that review, but for now. Yes.
We have applicants that want to speak.
Okay, why don't we do that now then, before we go to the public? Again, just state your name and address for the record. And this is, again, this is a continuation of the applicant's name.
Hello, Chair and Board. My name is Jeff Ryder. I live at one three eight 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 two hundred and tenth Street in Cold Spring. I'm the property owner who leases the property to Milk and Honey. A few points, before the March request by Peter, I'm not aware of any complaints made to me or Milk and Honey staff. Before this request, I'm not aware of any complaints made to Stearns County. I'm definitely not aware of any law enforcement, alcohol-related safety concerns or noise complaints prior to this, prior to this request. For the last year, we have worked hand in hand with Stearns County staff, civil engineers, wetland specialists to meet all requirements. The nine hundred and ninety-person limit is a Stearns County ordinance. I strongly believe this request is granted and not held to a different standard. I think it's a great idea to move the sound to the northeast away from residents and direct all sound to I ninety-four. Lastly, my daughter Grace, who's nine, is holding her third annual pumpkin selling fundraiser in October. We're all, we're all proceeds at Milk and Honey. We're all, we're all proceeds at Milk and Honey. Go to the Centricare Children's Hospital and is asking for your support. Last year, we ran out of three hundred pumpkins in the first thirty minutes. I actually went to Thompson's to buy fifty more. But I thank you for your time and I thank you for giving us the opportunity to grow a better community.
Thank you. Any other applicants that wanna speak at this point? Okay, so we'll go to the public then. We'll do, handle the two people that have called in first and then we'll do the written correspondence. Deb, you, are they on? Are they ready?
Ron, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna state your name and address for the record and then state your comments? This is a public hearing.
Ann and Val Philippi, 11968 County Road 51. And I have a couple, a few other neighbors with us.
Ron, can you speak up a little bit?
I have a few other neighbors with us tonight.
Yes, Ron, we, I can hear you. Do you, you wanna, do they wanna identify themselves as well? Or are you just?
I think so.
Go ahead then. Each of the neighbors that wanna identify yourself, just identify yourself and the address. And then Ron can be, make a general comment then.
Yeah, this, this is Jim Nathan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
12044 County Road 51.
This is Mike Fluger, 12014 County Road 51.
Any other neighbors?
No.
Okay, Ron, you wanna share your comments?
Our concerns are the traffic on 51, noise. He mentioned the noise levels, but he didn't mention the nuisance. The nuisance is the bass from the music. Now, he's talking about moving it three hundred feet to the north and planting more trees and shrubs. We have a forest in between us right now and we still hear it. In the evening, we can't even escape it. We have to go in the house and we, we still hear the bass and it vibrates our windows. And you take County Road 51, that's part of Wabagon Trail. We have a lot of pedestrians on their road. And if they wanna more traffic on there, I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Either one of the other two neighbors wanna share something?
Yeah, this is Jim Nathan. What I was gonna say is, we're wondering how they could get a music festival started here in agricultural land? When the, the start of it was to have a cider and then sample it, but not music. So all of a sudden, now they had music in here. I lived to the west. I never got a letter yet from anybody or the neighbor. And when I'm doing chores in the evening, that's pretty loud and I can hear it no problem. Because if they move it back three hundred feet and face the north, that ain't gonna do anything. Because you're still gonna hear it because it's, it'll come over the top of them solar panels and right to my farm. There's no way that they're gonna deaden that sound like they think they're gonna. It's not gonna happen. And I was also wondering about how they got permitted for that A-40 with music. I don't know of any other townships around here that would allow that. And his pumpkin patch that he's working on with his kids, that's down in Cold Spring. That's not up here. That money goes down to Cold Spring, not, not up to St. Joe. Yeah, we're all excited up here because that's all we're gonna hear is noise and traffic. And the boats and from the, the two lakes up here, Big Fish and Watatab, that road is just solid travel.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Staff, can you, Heidi, you just wanna respond to how they could do this? It was the original conditional use permit, but why didn't you just?
Sure. Mr. Chair, the original conditional use permit was for an agriculturally-oriented business. And as part of their application at that time, they did indicate potentially having music. And that was part of why there was conditions placed at that time about the music going past 10:00 PM. So we were aware of that. That was all part of agriculturally-oriented business that was proposed at that time. And that's how they were allowed to have the music events until 10:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. And then does the third neighbor, you wanna share something for the record?
Sure, this is Mike Fluger. My, my question is, they, their parking is at a neighbor's property. Do they have a contract with the neighbor for their parking? If the neighbor decides he's done and doesn't want to have this parking, where are they gonna have the excess parking?
Heidi, do you know the answer to that?
No. Mr. Chair, they do have a parking plan where they can handle the required number of parking spaces for up to nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine people on site. Without needing other parking at external sites. They did a purchase additional, I think about five acres to the north. And a lot of that will be parking area when they have those larger crowds.
Okay, Mike, does that answer your question?
Sort of. I mean, a good percentage of their property is already planted into apple trees. And they wanna add two buildings. How many vehicles can you park on, on per acre of land?
Heidi, do you know that?
I think we're trying to pull up the. Also, the area to the north that they purchased is open land. It's not planted as archer.
It's runoff for the solar farm.
Right. It's, it's an open area that they can use for parking. They're not required to gravel it or do anything like that, but it's available for parking in the plant. So it's that area.
Heidi, is that different than, because it's temporary parking compared to like, when we deal with like bars, restaurants, like the golf course in Cold Spring? They had to have it. Is that because that's permanent? Or is there a difference?
We've allowed in some of these places where it's limited amounts of time for sure that they might have excess parking.
No. We're having trouble, we're having trouble with Heidi.
Okay.
Yep, there you are.
Okay, so there are a couple of different places, because we've allowed temporarily parking like this, where they're not required to, to blacktop it or gravel it. Says durable and dustless, so, you know, it can be ground stress, can be durable. And we've allowed that when it's a few times per year when it's been needed and not permanent parking.
Okay. Any further comments, Mike?
No, I think I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And that was it, right? The three of you there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Ron. I have one other question.
Sure.
If somebody wants to build on agricultural land, they have to have forty acres. Now, how can they put three buildings on sixteen acres?
Heidi?
Mr. Chair, the forty-acre rule is in regards to homes. You have to have forty acres in order to build a home. You need to account for forty acres when you wanna build a home in the agriculture forty area. That doesn't speak to accessory buildings, barns, agriculturally-oriented buildings. Just homes is where that, that standard comes in.
Okay. Okay, thank you again for calling in. We've gotten or received twenty-four written information. So Heidi's going to, we saw most of this. Heidi's going to review it. And the entire email letter will be submitted into the record. But she's going to do an overview of each of those items. So Heidi, go ahead.
Okay, so from St. Joseph Township, they submitted a letter. They believe this type of business fits with the mixed nature of the township and support its continuance. Recognize the business benefits in the expansion. They do not support the increase to nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine and have concerns with stormwater and parking. Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District, they require rigorous erosion control and periodic inspections. Cite is part of the Minnesota Agricultural Water Quality Certification Program, Certified Farms, which is a voluntary program where producers manage their land in a way that reduces the risk to water quality. Cidery has also hosted community outreach events in collaboration with SWCD, including a pollinator night and training for participants. And the University of Minnesota Extension says this is a resource to the community and agriculture in Minnesota. A host location for statewide research on cider apples, partners with the U of M on projects that will advance the apple industry in the state. Research will translate into increased agri tourism dollars in apple production. The following are in support of the request. Gary and Kay Beck told. They have been good neighbors. Support requests for storage, pavilion, events are well-managed. Owners look out for the interests of neighbors. Boz and Casey Basstrom, the owners have been in regular contact with neighbors and encouraged to bring concerns to them. All owners and families have a strong presence and they maintain a controlled atmosphere. Business model is one that caters to a more controlled group. Cover charges quality music and beverages which aren't cheap compared to a different clientele than if they were to host free concerts and offer cheap beer and shots of hard alcohol. Tom Shelley Ben and Addie Carlson, provide an excellent family-friendly venue for gathering the community together while supporting other local businesses as well. Rudded in agricultural tourism, which is congruous with the rural character of the Avon Hills area and suitable business type for Highway 51 neighborhood. No issues with noise or traffic disturbances at the location secluded. Kevin Doyle, owner of Forest Mushrooms, wonderful addition to the area and to our neighborhood. Responsible neighbors and family-friendly pavilion is a great way to encourage people to enjoy the outdoors and the pleasant scenery while contributing to the local economy. Steve Wood Farnham Hill Ciders, we've been growing apples here for over fifty years and growing specialized hard cider apples for over thirty. Sell crop to cider makers around the country. Milk and Honey has been reliable customer for years. Joe Walls, owner of IMS Property Next Door, in one hundred percent favor. Great opportunity. Okay. Tammy Tyce, State Representative, business provides a family-friendly, responsibly-operated establishment, contributes to the community and local economy. It, it's an example of value-added agricultural product. Julia Walls, as a neighboring landowner, she supports their endeavors and mission in the community to promote agriculture and cider. Nathan Waters, President, Minnesota Cider Guild, as a founding member of the Minnesota Cider Guild, they have helped strengthen our organization's mission to promote and develop cider as a culturally and historically important beverage. Mary Bruno, the owners are board members of the St. Joe Visitor and Convention Bureau. They participate in the St. Joe Shop Small Crawl on Small Business Saturday, which strengthens local businesses and spurs economic opportunity in the area. Brought tourism to a new level with all the wonderful things happening out at the taproom. They host fundraisers and contribute to community growth without fail and have been leaders in working as a team with the community. Kristen Kathy Schellinger, tremendously positive addition to the local community. Local is the best way to describe them. They have engaged and embraced the local community. Ability to hold special events is the right thing to do. It will have positive ripple effects throughout the local community. Rob Davis, the business is welcoming, accessible, thoughtfully considered, and professionally managed. This is a unique and wonderful Minnesota experience. Families and adults from a rage, range of ages responsibly enjoying the community atmosphere and experience of an afternoon or evening. Michael Doyle, impressed with the caliber of events that have been hosted here. Have an enterprise that provides a pleasant, welcoming atmosphere, are responsible business owners, and attract fun and respectful gatherings. And the letters that we received in opposition to the request. First one, Marlin enjoys favor started as an orchard and apple cider business, then came the bar and loud concerts, witnessed cars turning around in our driveway. It's very dangerous being there. It's a very steep hill which has no real vision of cars coming. Security light shines into their windows. Ryan and Laura Flattan purchased home fifteen years ago, selecting the property and area based on the location. They enjoy nature and the peace and quiet, limited traffic and increased safety. Concerns with increased traffic on County Road 51 and the fact that there is no turn lane. Business has poorly sized small sign marking their entrance and customers frequently miss their entrance. Drivers turn around in their driveway, causing privacy and safety concerns, expanding attendance to nine-ninety-nine will triple the safety risks described. Music can be heard outside in their home, in the yard, or inside the house. It lasts late into the evening, disrupting their sleep. Concerned with impaired drivers, the business owners should have selected another location if this was their desired business. Alan and Carol, Caroline Glatzel, Riley Glatzel, Leo and Teresa Glatzel. Concerned with too much traffic problems and noise pollution, last year their event, we could hear the music in our house, which is a quarter mile away from Milk and Honey Ciders. A text to the owners received no response. Concerned about the effect on wildlife. James and Carol Cubelbeck, owners of the private cartway immediately adjacent to the property. Cars cannot block the access to the private cartway along during overflow. Concerned with traffic generation noise, the local residents feel they were misled when the conditional use permit was initially granted. A sound barrier should be provided. Michael Fluger, concerned with removal of limitation on number of events and the capacity at events. Enjoy silence and privacy which has been destroyed. Works early mornings and it's hard to rest even when the windows shut. Customers frequently miss their entrance, drivers turn around in driveways, causing safety concerns. Concerned with parking a long road, customers leave that have been drinking. They should build a sound barrier in turn lane. Move the speakers north will not help. County Road 51 is a busy road. Loud music and agriculture don't go together. Ron and Val Philippi, doesn't support removing limitations on the number of special events and increase in the maximum capacity for special events to nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine people. Concerned with traffic, parking noise from the bands making it hard to sleep. The business should support agriculture. They grow apple trees, but the business and having large crowds is not agricultural. James and Deb Nathan, concerned with loud music events that can be heard while doing chores in the barn, which is three-quarter mile away. There will be increased traffic and parking. Fast events have went past 10:00 PM. There should be security required for large events. Is this enough land for a thousand people? Mark Nathan, concerned with noise, partying, traffic. There's a blind intersection when traveling from the west. The road is also used by bikers, walkers, trucks, and farmers. Michael Fluger, concerned with noise. Moving the speakers north will not help. County Road 51 is busy. Loud music and egg don't go together. And that is all of the letters we received.
We do have one more caller on the phone. Are you there? Deb, do we have that caller?
Marlin, are you there?
Marlin, are you there?
Is someone else on the phone at this point that has not testified? Okay, I don't believe there is. Nope. Okay. So if anyone, again, just one last call, is anyone on the line that wants to testify that has not testified? Okay, what I'm going to ask the applicants to do real quick, if you don't mind. There was like five major things that are consistently brought up and I'd like you to address that, please. So Peter, are you able to hear us? Are you there, Peter?
Mr. Chair, I can hear you.
Okay, or whatever, whichever part of your group, just jot these down. And if you could just respond to these, that might be helpful. The one is the security light shining into the windows. Let's just take all the concerns and then respond to them all at once, if you don't mind. These are just my, what I took out of everything we just heard. So if you can respond to the security light shining in the windows of the favors. Turn lane, the absence of a turn lane has come up a couple of times. Small signage and the people being confused and driving past it and then turning around in the driveways. Mr. Kiebelbeck with the blocking of the private cartway. Those were the consistent themes that I kind of heard and it might be helpful if you can respond to those, Peter, please.
Mr. Chair, from my notes regarding the lights. The west security light has been switched to a dimmable LED light that goes down to 10% when it's not triggered by motion and we change the angle. Second item regarding the traffic. We have done four action items to deal with people turning around in neighbors driveways. We worked with a neighbor to trim some trees to make the sign more visible for at least a quarter mile. We've added a sandwich board closer to the road during busy hours. Paid for the installation of a second sign that will say Milk and Honey next right by the Stearns County Public Works. And then we've moved the GPS pin on, on like the public navigational maps closer so people don't go past it. Fourth item here, I have on the cartway. We do not block the cartway that's a, goes through the west side of our property. There is a gate that is controlled by the user that we do not have a key. And will not continue to block that. Was, Mr. Chair?
I think that's what I heard consistently. So right now, if we're, if we don't have anybody new on the line, there's no new testimony to be submitted. Is, I'll do one last call. Anybody want to say anything before we close the public hearing? Not the commission members, we'll discuss once we close the public hearing. Anyone want to say anything before we close the public hearing?
Yes, this is Ron Philippi. I'd like to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
A lot of the people that were in favor of it, they're miles away. They don't, they don't hear the music unless they go there and participate in the music. Yeah, a lot of them are five miles away.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Anybody else want to say anything before we close the public hearing?
One other item, a lot of his fixes, we won't know if they're fixes until he has a few more events. And one other thing is last year, I came close to calling the sheriff because of the nuisance and the noise. But I was a good neighbor and I never have.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else want to add anything?
Yeah, this is Jim calling or hollering. He's talking about those three day events. Do you know anybody that goes to a big concert like that and leaves right away? I'm sure there's going to be campers dragging in beside that. You know what? What do you think of that?
Heidi, are campers going to be allowed?
No, Mr. Chair, camping is not allowed as part of this egg oriented business.
And I'm sorry, we just want to, for the record, was that Jim Nathan?
That's right.
Yep, that asked that question. It was Jim Nathan, for the record. Camping would not be allowed or campers on the site would not be allowed. Okay. And okay.
One question, Mike Fluger.
Okay.
They said they're going to give us a 14 day notification when they have their concerts.
Yes.
Does that mean when they give me my notification, I should find someplace else to go so I don't have to listen to their music?
I'm not sure what the intent is and maybe at some point when we're answering some of the commission questions. Peter, I'll ask you to answer that when we're having a discussion with the commission members, please. Anything else? If not, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing. Sean, what was to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Is that Jason Cron? Yep, so it's been moving second to close the public hearing. We're going to do a roll call. All those in favor, when I call your name, say aye. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Masman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the public hearing is closed. Okay, discussion by members. Commission members, you have questions?
Question on parking, this is Commissioner Blankish.
Yes.
All parking going to be on site for employees and for customers.
Heidi?
Mr. Chair, yes, all parking. They've shown enough parking spaces on their site plan to account for employees and up to 999.
This is, this is on the property deal, correct?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Heidi, Commissioner Persky, did I understand the township did not support the recommendation to go to 999? They were suggesting that it stay at 300?
Yes, based on the comments we received, they didn't support increasing to 999. They supported the business and allowing it to continue, but not the increase to 999.
You said they supported the business and allowing it to continue, but what about the proposal that they're requesting?
Yeah, they did not support the increase to 999 people.
Mr. Chair, to add on to Commissioner Persky's, but they didn't have any objection to the building of the stage additional structures, correct, Heidi?
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Now's the time, we got to go to the findings here pretty quick. So if you've got questions, let's do it.
Mr. Chair.
Jason.
You know, I appreciate all the public comments. Obviously, some neighbors have expressed their concerns and I appreciate them sharing those. I definitely took a lot closer look at all the issues on this application as a result of them. You know, it really boils down to property rights and neighbors are entitled to their property rights. But likewise, the applicant is as well. And if I look at the requests being made by the applicant, I find nothing that the applicant's requesting to be unreasonable. The music is certainly concerned. I know the applicant has done a lot, the way it looks, to address those concerns. And it may not be to the choice or the desire of everyone, but I think it's extremely reasonable considering everything they're working with. So just overall, again, appreciate all the feedback from everybody on this. We just need to make sure that everybody's property rights are protected the same and under the same standards, not different standards.
Mr. Chair, I'll respond to that. And the initial request was to put in a cider farm and they did that. The music was adjunct, it was just additional. And now it seems that it's becoming an entertainment venue. That's not what the initial proposal was. We heard that and the initial proposal, we might have seen opposition. Same thing could be true about somebody that's going to maybe do, maybe have a few motorcycles out at their place. That's one thing to have a few people gather on motorcycles, but when you start running motocross events, that becomes a different venue. Again, the initial, I'll tell you what, it's a great operation. You know, I think they've done a wonderful job. Pete's, you know, got a great business going out there. But now we switching it to entertainment and that's not what the initial use of the property was. My opinion would be, let's, there's no need to make a hasty decision on this. We don't need to change this as it is. We know there's problems already. Why not go ahead and allow them to adjust their situation with the existing conditions of having six events out there like they are at 300 and then bring it back in a year or so and see, you know what? Maybe we can, we can move it to 999 or we can move it to 300. But I don't think it's, it's right to go ahead and just go ahead and say, okay, we're going to give you this. Well, next year they come back or in two years they come back and say, well, we want to do it every weekend. Well, there, where's the property rights issue? It's their property, they can do whatever they want. Well, then let's do it nightly. Their foot is in the door. We allowed them to open it up as a cider farm. The music was just adjunct and now it's becoming the main drawing card. I say we, I say we wait.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. And when you say wait, just so I'm clear, right now currently, Heidi, they can do the six events up to 300 people.
Mr. Chair, right now they can do 12 events up to 300 people. The current permit allows 12 events. One of those events can be three days in duration and 300 people.
Got it. So if Commissioner Persky, it would stay as is, Commissioner Persky, that's what you're suggesting?
That is correct. And then again, if they can mitigate the issues that we have at the present, then let's go ahead and let them expand that. But that would be proof to go ahead, show that you've made these adjustments and then the neighbors will be on board.
So just semantically, staff, then if we would want to continue as Commissioner Persky suggests as is, then we would deny the request?
Right, that's correct.
I just want to understand the semantics of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One thing I just wanted to know with what Commissioner Persky is stating, you know, one of the things that they are asking to do is to build a new stage to move the music further from the neighbors. If this is denied, they would not be able to build that stage further from the neighbors. I just want to make sure that that's understood. The construction projects would also not be able to happen if this was denied.
My opinion would be that the construction projects would be separate. I would have no problem with him putting more storage for their business. I want that business to thrive. If they would like to move the stage, okay, and that would be a form of mitigating the existing problem. I could, I could see having them approach just about moving the stage. I have no trouble with that.
So again, that's what we're trying to get here. Then what we potentially could do is still recommend approval. And again, just for the record, we're recommending body, we recommend something to the county board. Commissioner Persky and the other four commissioners, one of whom I think has joined us listening to this. They make the decision, the final decision whether or not this gets approved or not. So, but if we would, you know, there's really three different things we can do. One, we have to do the findings of the facts, but just keep this in the back of your mind. We can approve the request as is. We can deny the request as is, and then it would revert back to no building or anything else and it would have the 12 events for 300. Or we can deny, or we can delete the conditions or the parts of the application that would allow the 999 people and some of those other things and then still leave the other items. Right? Okay, so that's, we have, we have those three options with what we have before us right now.
Mr. Chair, just so I can confirm my understanding correctly. If we were to recommend denial, the music, which is obviously one of the concerns of the neighbors, wouldn't change at all.
All right, my understanding correct?
Yeah, so the only, the biggest concern then from the neighbors, if we had recommended denial, would be the traffic concern. And you know, that's the added track, traffic of maybe 66 more percent on a few days throughout the course of the year. And it'd be interesting to look at how that adds up to other events such as the lakes and the boats that happened many days, the traffic to St. John's during home football games. I, I think from a relative perspective and the amount of automobiles that travel that road, it would be an interesting number to compare.
Thank you, Jason. Shelley's not in the room, but I have this funny feeling she wants to say something.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Peter. I just want to clarify a point from about three or four points back regarding the township. The township letter from St. Joe that you have was in response to the original request before it was revised. And I think they had some partial information. They weren't in support of the 999 due to the erosion issues. And I don't think they realized that we do have a stormwater agreement with Stearns County enacted. On April 13th, we got, had a township meeting with them where we made them aware of that. But they have not responded yea or nay to the new proposed revised amendment or revised request, excuse me.
So we're not aware of what their intent is. You know, it's always nice when township officials join in at the public hearing because we do certainly want their input, but we're not quite sure where they're at. Heidi?
Mr. Chair, we did reach out to the township after their last meeting to see if they had different comments or new comments or, and they needed us to go ahead with the comments as submitted.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Would it be appropriate at this time to propose a change to the second condition talking about the numbers? I'm wondering, my proposed, and if it's appropriate, make it a motion to have the three day event duration limited to 300 people. Putting 900 folks per day on a site. That's a lot to jump up to. I wonder if we want to limit the special event, the three day special event to a maximum of 300 people. Would that be allowable, Heidi?
Oh, Mr. Chair, yeah, that would be an option for you to recommend in the conditions.
So just to be clear where that would happen would be in condition number two. For the fifth sentence down, capacities for special events shall be 999. for the fifth sentence down, capacities for special events shall be 999. That would change to 300? Am I understanding that right?
Mr. Chair, it would be the, the second sentence where it says one of the special events may be up to three d- days in duration. And then we would add on, and that would be limited to 300 people on the site at a time.
Okay.
That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Um, and, and it, uh, appreciate that, Jason. Is there a second to that motion? Jason, I removed it. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Jason Crone seconds that motion. Um, would there be? Uh, my question would be, would there be other changes based on what Commissioner Persky has expressed that we would need to make or should make to accommodate his concern? Uh, in the conditions? I'm not seeing any. I think really the number, the number, uh, and I'm asking this both of staff and members and Commissioner Persky specifically, it's the number of people that you really, um, are, are questioning. The rest of that you're not. So this motion would, in essence, kind of sort through where we're at with this. The applicant, uh, Peter wants to say something.
Um, it, well, Mr. Chair, the public hearing is closed, I believe, but, um, so, so then it would limit the number at 300? And so the 999 would disappear for all 12 events? Is that correct?
Uh, Jason can confirm, but that's how I understand his motion.
Uh, actually, no, Mr. Chair, um, and Commissioner Persky. Um, so they would have the additional six events. So they would have six events at 999. Um, or up to 999. Um, the remaining events would be at 300 and then the three day special event. Um, the event of three day duration would be limited to 300. So they'd still have the 12 events, half of which would be limited to 300. The other half to 999. The only change is that three day event would be limited to 300.
Got it. Well, thank you for that clarification. I don't think I understood that. Uh, so thank you for that clarification. Um, Commissioner Persky?
Okay, um, I mean, that's, that's the motion that's on the table. Again, I would not support going to 999 again. I think that changes the entire venue. It becomes enter- more entertainment than it does farm. Um, and, and again, then the request comes again and it, it just, it continues on. Um, also, it may be interesting for us to even look at how this now becomes appropriate for zoning. Because at what point does it end being a agricultural, um, venue to an entertainment venue too? So just another point.
Sure. So, um, we do have a motion before us. Anybody else want to weigh in before we vote? So again, just to reiterate, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, what you're suggesting is that a three day event, so six of the events would be limited to 300? The other six events would still be open to the 999. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And then the three day event, the three day in duration event would be limited to 300.
Yep, got it. Okay, everybody clear in the motion? Motion's been made and seconded, so we're gonna do a roll call. Uh, and I'm gonna call your names. So, uh, if you're for the motion, vote aye. You're opposed to the motion, vote nay. Uh, Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Uh, Ken Mossman?
Nay.
Uh, Rich Blankish?
Nay.
Uh, and the chair generally doesn't have to vote, but I'm going to vote and I'm gonna say no. So the motion fails on a tie vote. Um, so someone should make a motion, um, on the number based on what Commissioner Persky's sharing that board would feel comfortable with. Because my free, my fear is we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We don't want to recommend something that is not going to get approved at all. Uh, I'd like to put some of these changes in effect and at least have something than not be able to have anything. So I think a motion would be in order, uh, to limit all the events based on what Commissioner Persky's saying to 300.
So, Mr. Chair, a question for Heidi. If we strike the second condition, um, that would limit them to 300, but allow them to do everything else, correct?
Um, Mr. Chair, we'd want to keep some of the second condition. We would just want to strike where they mentioned 999.
Okay.
Cause the second condition does all the hours of operation and the 12 events and, and all of that. So we would just want to strike wherever it said the 999.
Uh, and that's a good question, Jason. Uh, the other question, Heidi, that would be, uh, when, um, Jason added or suggested adding after the three day event up to 300, we would have to do that. Changing the 999 to 300 would make all the events 300.
Correct. The way it currently is.
So really it's, it would, it would only be changing the 999 to 300 if we want to get to what Commissioner Persky's saying.
Right. You would be essentially just keeping that condition the way it currently exists.
Got it. So what do the members want to do?
I would defer to those that, that, uh, said nay on the, the previous proposal.
So Rich and Ken, um.
Jeff, Ken Mossman here. I would agree with what Joe said. Can change everything, but leave the number at 300 for the present time. I would agree to that.
So is that a motion, Ken?
Yes, I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Ken made a motion to change, uh, the 999 people, uh, on condition number two to 300? Is there a second to that?
Blankish seconds that.
Uh, Rich Blankish seconds that motion. Uh, is there any discussion? Everybody clear in the motion? If so, uh, we'll do a call of the, uh, motion. Uh, Jason Wienerman?
Nay.
Uh, Sean Blackburn? Sean? Did we lose Sean?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Jason voted no. Sean voted aye. J- uh, Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Uh, Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Uh, and the chair votes aye. So, uh, the number in I, number, uh, condition number two will be changed from 999 to 300? Uh, and then I think now, uh, that's probably the most, uh, the biggest issue. Now we should do the findings. Okay, let's do the findings of facts, guys. Uh, number one, is the proposal consistent with existing county ordinances, performance standards? Specify the applicable section on the ordinance and discuss why or why not.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. It is appropriate according to the land use and zoning ordinance number 439, sections 4.8, 6.5, and 9.3.5B.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Jason. Number two, are there any other standards, rules, or requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, there's 12 proposed conditions.
12 conditions. Thank you, Jason. Three, is the proposed use compatible with the present and future land uses in the area? And can it be separated by distance screening from adjacent land uses? Why or why not? How will any scenic use be impacted by the proposed use?
Mr. Chair, I believe according to the modification of the sighting of the stage, um, we might see a reduction in noise influence of the surrounding landowners. So there is a potential for, um, less incompatibility with the present and future land uses.
Is everybody in agreement with that? Or anybody want to add anything? If not, thank you, Jason. Four, are there environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection areas that should be addressed as part of the proposed request?
Yes, there is groundwater runoff. It's going to be addressed.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Anybody else? Five, uh, has information been provided regarding the impact property values? No. Six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generation impacts will the proposal have in relation to the area and the capability of the road serving the area and how are they being addressed?
Mr. Chair, I believe as we have not changed the numbers of attendees at these events, um, this, there would be no change to health, safety, or traffic generation based upon the current proposal.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Uh, seven, how does the proposal affect general health, safety, and welfare of the residents?
This is Commissioner Blankish. Uh, as far as health for area residents, uh, obviously it upsets, um, what is currently going on. It would be impact some of their health in regards to, um, blood pressure rises with loud noises and just some.
Thank you, Rich. Anybody else? Not number eight, does the proposed, uh, conform, the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county comprehensive plan? Specify which goals and objectives apply.
Mr. Chair, I believe it does under the economic development plan, specifically of objective two, capture an increasing share of the opportunities for value-added agriculture in food manufacturing, biofuels, and the burgeoning industries, utilizing egg products um, as, uh, a, you know, feedstock. Uh, the key here, not so much the feedstock, but the, uh, a diversification of, of the, the ag. Um, also, objective three, creating opportunities for new investment in agricultural operations, uh, in support industries.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Jason. If not, uh, uh, how, number nine, how does the proposal affect existing public services and facilities, including schools, parks, streets, and utilities?
Uh, Mr. Chair, no change, minimal effect.
No change, minimal effect. Sean, thank you. Anybody else? Um, number 10, has the applicant provided financial assurance to guarantee reclamation? It's not applicable. Number 11, other issues pertinent, uh, to this matter? I would say that we, uh, would say that we had parts of two public hearings on this. We received, um, a lot of input, 30 plus people, both for and against it. Uh, would be relevant. Uh, anything else? If not, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, I'd make, uh, propose to recommend approval, uh, with the 12 conditions.
Motion's been made by Jason to recommend approval with the 12 conditions. There's. Uh, Rich Blankish seconds that. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, if not, I'll call the question, uh, if you're for the motion, vote aye. Opposed, nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the recommendation is made to the county board to, um, recommend approval under the amended, uh, application. So thank, thank you, everybody for your work, work on that. Um, item number two, uh, to consider a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Dale and Joan Overman, Albany. Uh, Heidi will give the staff report.
Hey. To consider a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Dale and Joan Overman, Albany, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8, 6.36, and 9.2 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439, corporate pallet manufacturing, limited rural business and agriculture in the zoning district. Proposed to those located in part of Government Lot 6 in Section 35 Oak Township, lying east of County Road 30 and west of Sand Lake. So this, the business is currently in operation on the property. Um, Overmans took this over when the current, when the, the previous business owner passed away. They took over the business and began operating it. And have been working with the department since then to, um, everything permitted. So it's a kind of fee where they want to have the, um, town business is, is relatively flat. There's no wetlands near, uh, where they want to have their storage areas. Um, they're limited to four non-resident employees, uh, with the business. They will not have any outdoor display areas. They do have outdoor storage areas identified on their plan. Um, let's see. This is not open to the public, so we don't have to worry about public traffic out there. There's a hazardous waste. Um, there's no septic serving that the building that they use. They have equipment room for parking. Um, all setbacks are met for the building and for their storage areas. There are approximately 20 homes and three registered fee lots within a half mile of the property. Proposed conditions, if the planning commission recommends approval, is to discuss whether our operation should be set. And the state accessibility code is required to be met for the existing building that they are using. And request confirmation from a licensed building official, um, stating that it meets September 1st. And that's what I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Heidi. Um, we'll do, um, roll call of who visited the site. If you visited the site, say yes. If you did not, say no. Uh, Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Crone?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And the chair, I did too. So we all visited the site. Uh, do we have the applicants with us? One form or another? Uh, Deb, does someone know if Overmans are on the phone or?
Mr. Chair, they did, um, indicate to me that they may not. They weren't a hundred percent sure if they would be on the line tonight.
Okay.
Um, but I think we can, they were thinking of us moving forward with it if they weren't on the line.
Got it. So no one's on the line right now? I'm just checking. Uh, no one's on the line. Okay? Uh, so we can, um, any questions from commission members?
Uh, this is Jason Wienerman. Just a question for staff. Um, this is a pallet manufacturing operation. Are they doing any sawing on the site? And if so, what are they doing with their sawdust? Disposal, if they have any.
Heidi was briefly interrupted there. The question was, um, are they doing any sign? And what are they doing with the sawdust if they are?
That I'm, I'm not able to answer what they're doing with sawdust out there. They did not indicate anything regarding sawdust in their application.
I'm not sure, Jason, that that's what they're doing, but I can tell you that sawdust is used a lot in bedding. Farmers actually want that. I do not know if that's what they're doing with it or not, but there is a demand for sawdust for bedding.
Yeah, I didn't see any sawdust on the site, so it was just a point of interest if they are. I, there's nothing in their application, so I'm not going to worry about it.
I would guess that there is sawdust. I can't believe there wouldn't be. And maybe just for confirmation, Heidi, you could ask them, you know, if there is and what they are doing with it, because if nothing else, it would make them think of it, number one. Number two, if there was a concern, the board could address it at that level if they had to.
Okay, I can do that.
And then just let us know when you find out. Any other planning commission members? Otherwise, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Open up the public hearing. No one is in the building. No one is online. I'll call one more time. Is there anybody online to give input on this application? Okay, if not, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing. This is Rich.
Rich moves to close the public hearing.
Jason Crone second.
Jason Crone seconds it. We'll do a roll call. If you're for closing the public hearing, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay, let's do the findings. Unless there's other questions, any questions?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question for, I would, I would make a motion to strike condition number one.
And I think that's a good point, Jason. We didn't discuss either one of those two conditions. I suppose we would have got there, but this is a good time to do it now. The conditions discuss whether our, their operation should be set. I would agree where the location, where the location is. I don't think we have to have a discussion personally, so I'd agree with Jason. Any objections to that?
No, I agree.
Okay, hearing no objections will eliminate condition number one. Condition number two, I did have a question, I guess, and I wrote it and I forgot to go to that page here, but the accessibility code, why would they need to meet that? What are they building that they would have to meet the accessibility code?
Mr. Chair, the way the accessibility code is written, when there is a change in use of an existing building, that needs to come into compliance, minimally come into compliance with the accessibility code. So there's things like ingress and egress from the building need to be accessible. And a few other things. It doesn't need to meet the full accessibility code, but it needs to, there's a list of items that need to be met when you change the use of a building from, you know, building or a residential accessory building that's not required to meet the accessibility code. Now it's got a commercial use to it, a business use to it, and that's what trips the accessibility code requirement.
And the Overmans are aware of that?
Yes, yep, we've spoken about it.
Okay, and then, does it matter how many people, you know, they're identifying zero to nine employees? Does it matter how many employees they have?
No, nope. If it's a limited rural business, the accessibility code is required. If it was a home extended business, if there was going to be zero employees, it does not have to meet the accessibility code. But because it kind of, it goes to that next level when they're going to have employees, non-resident employees, that's when it trips needing that requirement. And another application said zero to nine, it is limited to four employees for a limited rural business.
Do they know that?
Yes.
Okay, we might want to state that in the findings and at some point, maybe other issues pertinent, that they've been told that. They're not open to the public. That's why that accessibility
Right.
question came to me, I guess, is.
Sure, yep.
Okay, so.
Minimal requirements they need to meet for that.
Got it. Okay, good point, guys.
Mr. Chair?
Joel?
Yeah, on the site visit, you know, this is going to be rural business. The existing building and then as you come in, the storage on the right of the driveway, I have no problem with that. The storage in the back, as far as emergency vehicles, getting a fire truck back there. Because it's a business, do we have to make sure that, that, that you would have access to an emergency vehicle back there?
Heidi?
Mr. Chair, I'm not aware of any requirements for that. I mean, that would probably be a good idea.
Yeah, you know, and I drove through the property and I noticed a number of gates. And I, I'm just wondering if, if there's room to get a fire truck back there. Should you have a fire back there? Again, it's different if it's ag, but now that becomes rural business. I don't know, you mean, they can just make the, you know, the appropriate accommodations by making sure that the area is cleared and, you know, that it comes in, you know, that it's accessible.
This is Rich Blankish. I'd like to make a comment there. Joel, one of the things that this owner is probably going to be dealing with, and that is insurance. Having a brother that's in the woodworking business, they go through them at least once a year and make sure everything is up to the company's specs as far as cleanliness, organization, and that access that we're talking about.
It certainly won't hurt to either suggest or make it a condition, which is very common, where they review the site with the fire chief. Certainly, the Freeport Fire Chief would be more than happy to go out and visit with them. And then that they both understand, you know, what they're doing. Oftentimes, fire departments will do that on their own when they know that there's something going on in their jurisdiction. So we could either make that a condition when we get that far, or minimumly, when you ask them about the sawdust, suggest that they do that.
And I think if you take a look at the nature of this business, they're, they're like matchsticks. That thing can burn quick and burn hot.
Yep. Point taken. Anything else before we do the conditions? If not, number one, is the proposal consistent with the existing county ordinances? Specify applicable sections of the ordinance and discuss why or why not.
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with zoning ordinance 439, sections 4.8, 6.36, and 9.2.5, letter N. A limited rural business is allowed as a conditional use permit in an agricultural 80 zoning district.
Thank you, Rich. Item number two, are there any other standards, rules, or requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I would recommend the one proposed condition surrounding the accessibility code.
Thank you, Jason.
Question, is this where we want to insert that we request that the site be inspected by the Freeport Fire Chief?
We can either do it as a condition, or we can do it in other issues pertinent, either one. Whatever the will of the commission is.
Whatever, everybody.
I would prefer to do it in the other conditions. Sorry, I'm sorry, other issues pertinent to the matter.
Okay. Is that okay? Is that okay, Rich?
Thank you, Jason. That's, that's good.
Okay. So it would be the one condition then for number two. Number, number three, is the proposed use compatible with the present and future land uses in the area? Going to be separated by distance screening from adjacent land uses?
Mr. Chair, I'd consider it fairly screened already.
Okay. Certainly was, where he is. Four, are there environmental concerns groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection that should be addressed as part of this proposed request?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. When staff gets a response to the sawdust question, otherwise, everything else has been met.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Five, has information been provided regarding the impact property values as a result of the proposal? No? Six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generation impacts will the proposal have in relation to the area?
Minimal.
Minimal.
Minimum effect. Number seven, how does the proposal affect general health, safety, welfare of the residents?
Again, minimal.
Minimum to no change. Eight, does the proposal conform with the goals, objectives of county comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'm going to say it with the economic development plan goals and objectives. I'll go forth to increase the value of just county economic production and showing operations sustain natural resources.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Anything else, anybody? If not, how does a proposal affect existing public services, schools, parks, streets, and utilities? Minimum to no effect. Ten, has the applicant provided financial assurance? It's not applicable. And then other issues pertinent. Recommended that they visit with the fire chief to review a fire plan. Okay, motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, this is Jason Crone, and I would make a motion to recommend approval with the one condition.
Motion's made by Jason.
I will second that. This is Rich.
Rich Blankish seconds that motion. Any discussion? If not, if you're in favor of the motion, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay. Thank you. Item number three. The consider a conditional use permit application submitted by Solar Club on behalf of Howard and Penny Covert, Eden Valley? Heidi?
To consider a conditional use permit application submitted by Solar Club, 29 LLC YZ, Minnesota, on behalf of Howard and Penny Covert, Eden Valley, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8, 6.52, and 9.3.5 V of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439, to construct the one megawatt solar garden in the agriculture 40 zoning district. The property under consideration is located in part of the southwest quarter, southwest corner, lying north of Meeker Stern Street in section 34 Eden Valley Township. So the property is not within any areas of concern or overlay districts. Access will be from Sterns Meeker Street. Whiteslands on the property have been delineated. The solar garden won't impact any wetlands, however, this road will have a minimal impact, which is covered under their de minimis exemption, so they're allowed that, that small impact. It's relatively flat-tilted field that slopes down to the west. It's only one acre new impervious, so in the storm larger management plan's not required. All power and communication lines will be underground. All setbacks are met. For decommissioning, $125,000 cash escrow or letter of credit is required. No aviation analysis was required. The ground cover is required to meet the beneficial habitat standards and a financial guarantee and 125% of the cost to implement that plan is required. There are approximately 12 homes and one registered feedlot within a half mile of the property. The land evaluation site assessment is 77.14, which is above the non-agricultural conversion of 65. Property is located within the agricultural area on the future land use plan. Recommended conditions, if the planning commission recommends approval. Number one, a qualified engineer shall certify that the foundation and design of the solar panels is within accepted professional standards. Number two, submit manufacturing specifications for all equipment prior to issuance of a construction site permit. Number three, a financial guarantee in the form of a cash escrow or letter of credit in the amount of $125,000 shall be submitted prior to issuing the construction site permit to ensure proper decommissioning of the solar garden. The permitee shall notify the county at least one year prior to decommissioning of the solar farm. At such time, an updated decommissioning estimate shall be provided. The board may increase the financial guarantee required for the decommissioning upon application to amend the conditional use permit. Number four, the applicant will install and establish ground cover meeting the beneficial habitat standards consistent with Minnesota statutes and guidance set by the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. Solar site pollinator habitat assessment form shall be completed. Cash escrow or letter of credit in the amount of 125% of the cost to vegetate the project areas required. The ground cover shall be maintained for the life of the project. And an assessment form shall be submitted every three years. A seating plan review and inspection fee will be required to be paid prior to issuing the construction site permit, and that fee will cover the CD, review of the seating plan and inspections throughout the life of the party or the life of the project. Number five, environmental services shall be notified of any changes to project ownership, including new contact information. And that is all that I have.
Heidi's getting ahead of herself there a little bit. Good idea. One question, Heidi and staff. So if environmental services doesn't get notified of a property change, we really can't pull the conditional use permit from the former company? So how does that work? I'm just, and we don't have to answer that this second, but there's no teeth in this, because if I'm the owner, I sell it to you. I don't notify the county. You can't take something away from me. It's not my project anymore.
Yeah, Eric's here. Wouldn't that sale of that land or that tour raid that have to go through the county, doesn't, doesn't the sale get registered? When there's a switch, when there's an exchange of ownership?
Not the project, it's the land. So where, are we issuing the CUP to the landowner? Okay.
To the land.
There, well, there you go. And then there is teeth to it, because then the landowner could not operate a solar farm. Probably just no fault, no fault of their own, maybe. They don't even know because the solar companies run all this. But the, the, the land wouldn't change ownership, Rich. It would be the project that changed ownership. Remember that one that changed ownership, what, two times? Or three times? So.
What can we do so there's notification on?
So maybe what we could do is make, make, we could do the condition that the solar company needs to inform the landowner of the requirement that if the project changes hands, that the landowner is responsible along with the former and future solar company to notify the county. So then you'd have three parties responsible. And ultimately, the teeth would be the property owner. If he wouldn't notify, he or she wouldn't notify us, they could lose the conditional use permit. How's that?
It would work, with some teeth.
Okay, so do you want to restate that in that condition then? Don't you think?
Yeah, I can add something to that effect, yep.
So we don't have to wordsmith that now, but the, the concept. So we don't have to wordsmith that now, but the, the concept, everybody understands. Anybody have any input or?
Does not make sense.
Does not, okay. We'll do that. So we oh, we didn't do anything on the site visit, I'm sorry. So if you were at the site, say yes. If you were not, say no. Jason Weinerin?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Crowe?
Yeah.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And I too visited the site. So we got the staff report. Understand that the solar company, Mr. Besner is on the line. Mr. Besner, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. 4974 Interlocken Drive Northeast Alexandria, Minnesota. Here on behalf of the application in front of you. I appreciate all the staff help in this and have read through all the conditions. And we are agreeable to the now six conditions of the report. And here to answer any questions for you. I've been here a few times and I believe this will be my last time. So I don't need to take up any more of your time this evening unless you have some questions for me.
Did I miss something? Or we have five conditions? Or where's the sixth one?
I believe the one you just added.
No, that was number five. We just revised the fifth condition.
Got it. Okay. Understood.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody on the line? There's no one in the building. Is there anyone on the line from the public that wants to give input on this item? Hearing none, motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
Well, they've got motion to close the public hearing. Is it rich?
Rich Blankish moves closing public hearing.
Sean will second that.
I'm sure, was that Sean?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn seconds that motion. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye when I call your name. Jason Weinerin?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crowe? Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And, and the chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. No correspondence, obviously. The any discussion before we go to the public hearing? I mean, the findings of fact? Okay, that, number one, is the proposal consistent with the existing county ordinance performance standards? Specify the ordinances.
Mr. Chair, the proposal is consistent with the county ordinance 439. Section 4.8, 6.5, 2.2, and 9.3.5, letter V.
Thank you, Rich. Number two, are there any other standards, rules, or requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, the five proposed conditions as identified by staff with the modification to number five to reflect the ownership change notification.
Thank you, Jason. Number three, is the proposed use compatible with the future and land of present and future land use, uses in the area? Can it be separated by distance screening from adjacent land uses? Well, it's not compatible and certainly it's, you're going to see it, so it's not going to be screened. Now, there's no fencing requirement on the project. Or is there going to be front fencing, Chuck?
There'll be some, there'll be seven foot high chain link fence per Minnesota electrical requirements.
Number four, are there any environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection that should be addressed as part of the proposed request?
No. No concerns.
No requirements.
No requirements.
Thank you, Jason. Five, has information been provided regarding property values? No. Six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generation impacts will the proposal have in relation to the area and the capability of the road serving the area?
Minimal impact, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Jason, seven, how does the proposal affect the general health, safety, welfare of the residents?
Minimally.
Eight, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of county comprehensive plan? Somebody, somebody's got a party going on or background noise there. I'm not sure if we can mute that or have the party move down a little bit.
Is that Heidi again?
I got my eyes on her. It's not her yet, but the goals and objectives question, number eight we're at.
Mr. Chair, I believe it, it fits under the land use plan. If we were to look at, I'm sorry, let's look at the natural resources and environment. Environmental management plan objective for encouraged use of renewable energy systems, including wind and wind energy, solar energy, which reduce the footprint of the development on local and global natural systems.
Thank you, Jason. Number nine, how does the proposal affect the existing public services, facilities, including schools, parks, streets, utilities, and cartways?
Minimal impact, Mr. Chair.
I threw in cartways just to see if anybody was paying attention. Ten, has the applicant provided financial assurances? They will. Eleven, other issues pertinent to this matter. Do we know what project this is in Stearns County? Thirty-five?
I'd have to double check what number we're up to.
Roughly, we're close to that. We're, I think, other issues pertinent that this is in the thirties now of the 90 active solar projects on the, on the burner. Okay, with that.
Before you move on, with, with the decommissioning fee at 125,000. I, I have, have we come to that being our standard? Was, was there any formal approval or motion taken on that amount?
I think that's what we've done the last couple of projects, and I think after the county board discussion, that was the consensus to continue that. And from what I understood, the county board discussion, that, that was the, you know, that that's what we would go with for now until and unless we got better information.
Okay, and then we got Chuck. Are you still there?
I am.
Chuck, how do you, what, where is that decommissioning? How do you feel about that number? Is there an opinion on that?
My number, my opinion has been the same since the first 125, and I think it's very high. But obviously, the developer that I'm working with has figured out a way to absorb that cost into their project.
Okay.
Has that developer, Chuck, I'm just curious, have they also figured out a way how they're going to get rid of the panels in 30 years? Are you going to landfill them? Or are you going to incinerate them? Or what are you going to do with them when it's, the project's reached its life expectancy?
From what we understand, from today's standards, we would be recycling them and/or reselling them to another user as they'd be at about 75% of their current capacity.
Okay, and if you could share with staff how they can be recycled, I think that would be helpful. We've been looking for that information, how, how they can be recycled. Not verbally in, in writing, if you don't mind, please.
Certainly, I can send things over to Heidi and she can pass along to your boy.
Please. Any other questions? Otherwise, a motion's in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Weinerin, I recommend we forward the conditional use permit to the county board with the recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Jason. Second?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Jason, seconded by Sean to recommend approval to the county board. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye when I call your name. Opposed, say nay. Jason Weinerin?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crowe?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Nay.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
The chair votes no. Who knows and?
You just come in.
One, two, three, four. Four, no. Shelley, we can hear you, Shelley. Okay, the recommendation is.
We wanted to talk about another number.
We want to, we, we want to, we want to tell.
Didn't want to talk. And so they're like.
You might want to tell Shelley.
You have an option. You talk to the commissioner and see if they will hold. I, I think so.
We're having a sidebar, obviously. I kind of was starting to enjoy it, but I don't think that was appropriate. So, okay, let's go to item number four.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
See, we, we had a split decision on, on that last one, and I value your opinions. Can I have rationale on the two nay votes, if you don't mind?
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner Persky. I, I think we're making a big mistake. I think, I think we, I would highly recommend that we have a we need to turn microphones off.
Yeah, so I was just going to make that request.
Deb, maybe you could mute some people?
You should be able to press the.
If we can mute, how's this? As I've been very, you know, very adamant about a vocal. Stearns County has three times the number of applications that any county in the state of Minnesota has. Too much of a good thing, might be too much of a good thing. I don't think we've considered the full effects of this. And I really, really strongly recommend that we have a working group, just like we did with the wind program, just like we did with, what was the other major issue that we dealt with? And we had a working group. We dug into some things. We better understood what the decommissioning cost could be, what is going to happen with these. My concern about the wind turbines that, that are being now removed in other states like California. And they're simply being cut in four pieces and landfillled because there is no recycling option for this. I don't think we've thought through the full effect of potentially having 90 solar farms in a geographical area like Stearns County. What, what are all the different scenarios that can play out? And if we have a working group and we can answer those questions and we feel comfortable with it. I'm not a reactive guy. I like to be proactive. And I don't want to be doing something that my kids and my grandkids are going to have to pay for dearly in the future. And I don't think we've thought this all through. There's one reason these solar farms are coming. Substations and the financial government incentives. And when that dries up and when it hits the fan, which everybody doesn't think can happen, we're going through it right now with the virus. No one would have ever thought this could happen. When that happens, what are we going to do? And we don't have the answer for that. So I really strongly recommend, I know the commissioners talked about this. I do not think, I submitted a lot of the information through staff. I know commissioners were given it. But I don't, I think it was too much information. I don't think, I don't think all the commissioners saw the full extent of all of it. And even I did listen to that part of the meeting, you could definitely tell that they did not understand it to the depth that we do because we've approved a lot of these projects. They shouldn't understand. They don't need to understand it to their level. But certainly, Mr. Me, the county attorney, he didn't understand. And again, I don't expect him to, but that's where the working group could bring everybody up a little bit better to speed. And we could be more prepared for the full effects of this. That's a long answer, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I appreciate it. And then, Mr. Mossman, did, did you have a comment too?
Yes, I do, Joe. I did it because I think I voted no on every one where the lease score has been over 70. But when we get into this whole decommissioning thing, I was thinking about this the other day. Should we not go back to the property owners? And they should have something to say. Maybe they should look at their contract because in any other business, if something goes. It's the ultimate, the property owner who's in charge of getting stuff cleaned up. So maybe they should be looking at their contracts or have their lawyer look at the contracts. All they see is all this money I'm going to make. They don't think, well, what am I going to do with this pile of garbage when it's done? I got to clean this up. And they should maybe be writing something and they shouldn't be counting on Big Brother County, Coney out there taking care of all their business. It's really good. We've been doing their business for them, haven't we? But I voted against it because of the lease score. It's almost 80. That's one of the highest I think we've had. And that's.
Yeah, that's a good piece of ag property down there and that's part of the county.
Right.
Okay, well, again, I just wanted to know what those, those opinions were. And we, we, we can move on.
Mr. Chair, Joe, this is Jason. Joe, you know, I, because of the precedence, I voted aye. We, we, we haven't denied many of these recently, but I'm, I'm really with the commissioner in that I would like to get a handle on these as well. And I struggle. It is really a precedence reason I voted aye, but I was considering back and forth. So for what that's worth.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I, I'd like to add that I feel the same way as Jason and actually all of us. Yes, this is something we're certainly struggling with. I'm glad we raised the fee. I know we have to get some more information. I know we're doing probably fewer numbers lately. But I don't know if that's a realistic assessment, but yeah, we do have to turn it down and get a grasp on it.
If it just, the thought occurred to me because, you know, I, I had not heard that sentiment from three, four of you now, as I did. I've been kind of leading the charge of asking these questions, so I appreciate that. But I think a motion at the end of the meeting could be in order to recommend to the county board that we do create a working group, just like we did, similar to the wind power. And there was another one. I can't remember now. Because I, again, I think the working group, we will never have enough time during the meeting, a planning commission meeting or a county board meeting to dive into this. And there's some great state, remember, I'm the one that brought the decommissioning. We were at 25,000. And the, the state group that's working on it showed it was 50,000. When you figure in the factor, the, the cost of living adjustment over a 25, 30-year life expectancy. So there's a lot of information out there. We have not been given that. The county attorney isn't aware of it. The board isn't aware of it, and we're just passing these willy nilly. So maybe that's in order at the end of the meeting that we can do that. But until then, we got item number four, which by golly is another IPS solar request for amended CUP. Heidi?
To consider a request to amend conditional use permit P dash 013065. Submitted by IPS Solar Roseville, Minnesota on behalf of Todd and Janelle Bauer. Gold Spring, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8, 6.52, 9.3.5 V and 9.11.5 O of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439 to relocate an access road for 1 megawatt solar garden in the agriculture 40 and industrial zoning districts. Property under consideration is located. 40 and industrial zoning districts. Property under consideration is located in part of the southeast quarter and south of State Highway 23 in section 13 Wakefield Township. So, this is a request that was originally approved in June of 2019. Now, they are, the only change they're requesting is their access road location. It previously came off of County Road 140 and is now proposed to come off of 233rd Street. So, all setbacks are still met for the solar garden plan and layout. We're recommending we keep all the same conditions as the existing CUP with one additional condition that an erosion control plan shall be required and installed. And they have already submitted that erosion control plan to us. But I, that is about all that I have for this one.
At the site, say aye. I guess it was muted there. If, if you were at the site, say yes. If you were not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Crone?
Yes.
Jason had to drive the farthest. Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
And I was there. Oh, Joe, Commissioner Pirskey?
Yes.
Okay, we were all there. The staff report's done. Is someone from IPS Solar on the line?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yep. Say your name and address.
Yeah. Evan Carlson, 2670 Patton Road, Roseville, Minnesota with IPS Solar.
Okay. Anything you want to add to the staff report?
Yeah, the only change here is the access road. We need to have interconnect into this power line running along the controlled access highway. We were unable to get an access road into that controlled access highway. MinDOT controls it for safety reasons. The plan was to access it from the south, but we still need to have a road that actually connects to that power line, and it wouldn't work. So, if we interconnect over here, then that solves our interconnection problem. The access road and the interconnection are parallel to one another, simpler, and it's just a much easier way to do it. And it's the only way that this project could work.
Heidi, did the MinDOT get notified when we approved this a year ago?
Yes, they would have been sent notice of their request.
And they didn't respond?
Oh, I'd have to double check if they actually responded to that notice at that time.
Were you involved with this a year ago, Evan?
Yes, I was. The original access road did not go into the MinDOT right-of-way, but the, the interconnection did. The area directly to the north, the solar array, that's where the power line runs. It runs parallel to that controlled access highway and also along 223rd here. So, the plan was to access from the south and interconnect to the north. As we began designing the system, Excel required an access road along that path of interconnection, which would have been in MinDOT's controlled access highway, and they would not allow us to do that. So, I climbed all the way up the totem pole with MinDOT and talked with them about it, and they're very protective of these controlled access right-of-ways for safety reasons. So, the only other option to do it would be to go to the west here, and it just so happens that that's a possibility, connecting to that same line. So, pretty, pretty good solution. It's much orderable, so.
And I guess my point was that MinDOT had responded and had, you know, given that input then, that would have been, would have saved a lot of people money and time had they responded. There's no point in serving them a notice if they don't weigh in on it.
I think they probably didn't have all the information about the, the Excel requirements combined with the MinDOT requirements was the cause of it. It's not either one of them individually.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Nobody's in the building. Is there anybody online on this application? Doesn't sound like anybody's online. The motion's in order, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'm open for public hearing.
Okay, Sean moves to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Jason Crone, second.
Jason Crone, second. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, when I call your names, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Anything, any other questions? Anything else to add to the discussion?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. One question for staff. It says the county's in the process of switching the ownership of the road back to Wakefield Township. Did Wakefield Township provide any feedback on this?
Mr. Chair, the township is very much involved in this process, too. They've been working with the developer on an access permit, approach permit for it. So, yeah, they've been part of the process, and the county has given the township the authority to issue that approach and access permit since it's going to be, it's in the process of becoming a township road now. So, yeah, they've been very involved in this, too.
All right, thank you.
Good question, Jason. Nothing else?
Mr. Chair, I got about the cul-de-sac there, and looking at the right-of-way and the ownership of the properties, is, is there plans for future development on that property at all? There's another lot that belongs to the state of Minnesota that's on that cul-de-sac. Does anyone know that?
Yeah, you're asking, can you hear me? Am I still on?
Yeah. Evan, go ahead.
There's a parcel here that's being used by the DNR for their crane, I think it's their bird preserve, and there is a bird sanctuary to the north of the freeway. And my understanding was that their original intent was to use that parcel as a viewing area for the bird sanctuary, but that is not on our parcel. It's, you know, it's a totally separate parcel, so I couldn't tell you what they're doing with it.
That's accurate. There used to be a blue heron colony nesting area on the river below, and that was the viewing area, but that colony has since moved. So, the state still owns and operates as a scientific natural area.
That was Jason.
And then, I saw that park plots there. It's still existing, but it looks like it hasn't been used for a number of years. There's green timbers there. I mean, is there, is there any status on that? I mean, it's, it's not necessarily relevant to giving the access here, but yet, you know, it's something that maybe should be addressed.
Maybe the blue herons will move back someday.
And who would, I mean, we'd have to address it.
Well, that's just, that's just it. If it's going to default back to the township, would we be coming off the township road? I'm not quite sure the parcel itself with, on the cul-de-sac, looking at the map I'm looking at, I don't see the owner on, on the piece I've got. Is it the state of Minnesota?
Well, Evan should know, know that.
You're asking who owns the cul-de-sac area or?
Yes, yes, the cul-de-sac area.
It's a right-of-way owned by the county that's in the process of being turned over to the township. So, we applied to the township for an access permit and received it at their last meeting. So, they've already given us access to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
The right-of-way, you can kind of see it's that dotted line. It zigzags up.
You know, I understand that. Yep.
Okay, we'll do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the existing county ordinances?
Mr. Chair, yes, it is. The land use and zoning ordinance number 439, sections 4.8, 6.52, 9.3.5V, and 9.11.5O. Solar farms are allowed in the ag 40.
Thank you, Jason. This is a little unique and awkward because it's an amended CUP of original granted CUP, so some of these questions aren't going to be totally aligned. And to that point, all the conditions and everything under the original condition use permit continue. So, we aren't going to change, or we couldn't change, or could we?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe this application would allow you to change any of the existing conditions that are out there, as they aren't, they won't necessarily pertain to what this specific amendment request is regarding.
Got it. So, this is an amendment. So, again, it's going to be a little awkward on the findings here. It's not going to be clear. Two, are there any other standards, rules, or requirements the proposal must meet?
I think there's two proposed conditions, the one of which refers to all the previous conditions.
Correct. Yep, thank you, Jason. Three, is the proposed use compatible present, future land uses?
It is, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Four, are there environmental concerns, groundwater, surface waters, et cetera?
Nothing already being addressed.
Thank you, Sean. Five, has information been provided regarding property values? No. Six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generations?
Mr. Chair, it'll move the traffic off of the state road onto the township road, so it'll reduce traffic on a busier corridor. So, potentially approved.
Thank you, Jason. Seven, how does the proposal affect general health, safety, welfare of the residents?
Minimal effect, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sean. Eight, does the proposal conform the goals and objectives?
Mr. Chair, similar to the last one, under the Natural Resources and Environmental Management Plan, objective four, encourage use of renewable energy systems, including wind, solar, which reduce the footprint of development on local and global natural systems.
Thank you, Jason. Ten, has the applicant provided financial assurance? Under the original CUP for reclamation, but not specific on this, it's not required. Eleven, other issues pertinent to this matter? Okay, nothing? Or is there something?
Just the township, the, the access road is going to be turned over to the township, and they've been working collaboratively with the county.
Thank you, Jason. So, with that, motion would be in order?
I will make a motion recommendation to, a motion to recommend approval. How's that? With the two proposed conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Second, Rich.
Sean actually seconded. He beat you, Rich. There's been a motion and a second to recommend approval to the county board. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, when I call your names, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, only because this is already granted, and it's an amendment to do something. It's not a new solar farm. Okay. Next item, are we going to have Shelley and Angie join us, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm in the other rooms because of difficulties in the boardroom.
Got it.
Can you hear me here?
We can hear you, and we can see you and Shelley. I'm waving, I'm waving, but you can't see that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the, the planning commission at a previous meeting had requested some information from the Sauk River Watershed District, and they are nice enough to join us tonight. So, we have Scott and John. They should be on the line, willing to go through the questions that were sent to them a couple of months ago. And I did earlier this week submit those to the planning commission for your review as well. So, with that, Mr. Chair, would you like the Watershed District to go ahead and present this information, or do you want to do Q and A?
I think, Angie, thank you. I think they can recognize themselves in their names, addresses, and they may as well go through the questions. Would make the most sense, I think. So, John and Scott, if you're there, please identify yourself for the record, state your address, and then go through the questions that you were provided and the answers that you provided.
Mr. Chairman, this is John Rushline. I'm the ditch and permit coordinator for the Sauk River Watershed District Office, located at 524 Fourth Street South, Sauk Center, Minnesota.
Welcome.
District Administrator for the Sauk River Watershed District. I'm just going to use the same address. It's the work address, 524 Fourth Street South.
Okay, thank you. So, go ahead. Whichever one of you want to just overview the questions and your answers?
John, you want to handle it, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right. So, your guys' first question was, why were there recent improvements to the permitting process? Where did that come from? And so, I guess the, the district has not made any formal improvements or amendments to the permitting program. We attempt to collaborate with all the counties within the Watershed District boundary, and, and for the commission's information, the Watershed District is in parts of Douglas, Oak, Todd, Stearns, and a little bit of Meeker County. We try to do a better, perform permitting responsibilities without making it cumbersome for landowners, just like you guys do. We've worked really well with Stearns County on erosion control conditions within the county's permits. For the commission's reference, if the conditions of a county's permit meets the district's criteria, what we issue is called a general permit. There's no fee for a general permit to the applicant, but they are placed in, in our system for inspections. It's the understanding that the, our understanding that Stearns County doesn't have resources to perform regular compliance inspections, and so we try to do that. We try to go out and make sure that the applicants understand what needs to get done for, for erosion control. We do inspect all the permits that we issue, whether it's a general permit or a real permit or regular permit, and throughout the life of the permit. So, erosion control, we usually state, you know, 80% coverage of that final vegetation, and, and we'll go out and ensure that that vegetation is, has taken root before we close out an erosion control permit.
Do you mind, is this, is this Scott, by the way?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Do you mind if we have questions that we just address them while we're in that item?
Yeah, by all means.
Okay. One of the things we heard pretty regularly was that there was no inspection, that the people had to pay a fee, and they never saw or talked to anybody from your offices. So, you're saying you inspect all of them. Are the applicants confused on that, or I'm wondering, I'm asking out loud. I don't expect you to know that answer, but many applicants before us were informed that they had to pay the fee, and they paid the fee, and then afterwards, they would say, well, we had to pay that fee, but we never saw anybody.
Um, without specifics, I probably can't, can't answer to why that would be. Every, every permit, like I said, whether, whether, if, if the conditions of a permit that's issued by a different county, if those conditions meet like are erosion control conditions, then we don't, we don't administer a fee for that permit. And we'll still go out and do inspections. We do an inspection reports. do inspections. We do an inspection reports. Those get, right now, it's either John does it as the permit and ditch manager, or we have a environmental technician that does inspections. Those inspections are done on, through an inspection app that we have on a wireless tablet. Those inspections are reviewed by John, and then those are actually sent to the applicant. So I'm not sure why someone would say that they paid a fee, but have not received an inspection from us.
And I think other commission members, I don't think I'm losing it. I mean, that's what we kind of heard, wasn't it?
Mr. Chairman, this is John. There are several inspections that take place on these projects, in these permitted projects, where we don't encounter anybody on site either. We could be there during a time when they're not there. We'll go through, do our inspection, and can, and conduct our work and leave. A lot of times, permit inspections take 15 minutes.
So that, that would certainly explain it.
And we're out of there, especially on some of the shoreline stuff.
That would explain. And the permit, is it a general permit fee, or is it based, like is it a flat fee?
Our permit fee, fee schedule is based on, on the size of the project essentially, and how much work it takes to, to process that permit application, issue the permit, and conduct the inspections on that.
On a typical shoreline, shoreline review, 150-acre lake lot, what would a fee for something like that be, just generally?
So for, for a typical lake lot, it would be around $150.
And I remembered 125 is the number that I'd heard, so that's, that's right. And then the follow-up on the, no, I know fees, you have to, city councils, county governments, everybody, you have to associate the fee with an actual cost. You know, you can't establish a liquor license, for example, and say $50,000 for the license. It's got to be, it's got to be justified to, for the time or the involvement. So I would assume somebody did that at some point to come up with this $150, for example, to do a 15-minute potential review on a shoreline project, but I'm not sure how that, how that happens. When you do the inspections, and Heidi and Angie, Shelley, for our purposes, do we communicate, cross-communicate, that if we see something, do we tell them, and if they see something, do they tell us, or isn't there any of that going on?
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg and John can jump in too, because he communicates on a more regular basis with Nick Newman in our office, who deals with a lot of our shoreline projects. But as recent as today, Scott and I had a conversation about CHS and Alrosa, and not doubling up on a, on a requirement. So I think we have a good working relationship and open line of communication. If there's an issue that, erosion control issue, that the county doesn't feel that we can take on as quickly as maybe the Watershed District can, I know we certainly are open to having those discussions with them, and we haven't had to do that yet, but we've, we've talked about that.
Okay, perfect. Any other input on this one, Planning Commission members? If not, item number two?
This is Scott Henderson again. Number two was property owners should have known they had to get an SRDW permit because we listed as a condition many times. Our experience is that landowners think that once they have a permit from an entity, that they're good to go. That is why we, we have subscribed to your guys' listservs for the county to monitor and reach out to landowners before they begin any of their construction, to be sure that we can help them and, and get any permits that might be necessary from, from us. And so we try to do our best to contact all the people that go through the Stearns County process, if it would trigger a permit from the district.
Got it. Number three?
Number three, how many permits has the SRWD waived because of the county SAP? And I guess I'm not quite sure what SAP, but we don't waive permits. If the county issues a permit that meets the requirements of the district's rules, and like I said before, we issue what's called a general permit, and there is no fee associated with a general permit. We absorb all the administrative and inspection costs within our general operating budget, and so far, and this number is actually updated now, in 2020, we've issued 30 total permits, and three of those have been general permits. In 2019, we had 66 permits, and 14 of those were general. And that's, that's not specific to Stearns County, that's over the entire Watershed District.
And majority of those probably would be in Stearns County though, right?
If I had to venture a guess, I'd say yes, yeah, because, you know, for us being 1,000 square miles, a little over 1,000 square miles, 62% of our, our land is in Stearns County.
Okay. And that's SAP?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is, and yes, and you're correct, the majority of those are in Stearns County.
The, and the abbreviation SAP is a abbreviation Nick Newman made. He referred to it as a shoreline alteration permit, is what he's figuring to SAP. It's not something that we use a lot, so that, it's his term. Any questions, members? Stop, or say something if you do along the way. Number four, I read through this, but here's $150, I guess I forgot, that was one of the questions that you reviewed, but go ahead and review number four quickly.
So again, it's Scott, why do residents have to pay $150 permit fee if they're, if they determine it isn't covered in the shoreline alteration? We have specific requirements for erosion control, which are provided to the applicant, and the requirements are given to the applicant in detail, so they know exactly what will need to be done to protect that water resource. If those requirements are not in writing specifically in any other permit they are issued, then we proceed with our permitting process, and that's where the fee comes in. You know, I think you guys understand permitting fees, and, and, you know, for our authorities and the work that we do in reviewing a permit, and then the inspections, our permit fee covers that cost of doing those inspections, and ensuring that the conditions of the permit are met.
How, or maybe there's, I can't remember having read through this now, how about the soil and water? I mean, you've got the county, so you've got Nick Newman in that group, then you've got the soil and water, Greg Berg in that group, and then you've got you guys. Is there another agency that's involved, or is that pretty much it?
No, soil and water conservation districts, they don't have authorities for, they don't have the regulatory authority. So if they're out there, they're probably out there giving technical assistance to someone that might be doing a shoreline restoration, or, or, you know, shoreline projects. So they're not actually looking at, I'm sure they would give advice about erosion control during the process, but they don't have the regulatory authority that the Watershed District does. Beside ourselves and in the county, if, if an applicant is working below the ordinary high water level of an area, then they would probably have to get a permit, or permission from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to place any kind of bill or riprap or anything below that ordinary high water level, which is that elevation that, you know, the lake is always at a certain elevation.
I've heard it referenced, softo, hardto, softo, the different levels of in the water, right out of the water, you've got different, so the DNR could potentially be a fourth governmental entity involved. And of course, the water, soil and water would be a granting, if they're doing a grant, obviously, to access the grant, they may have some requirements that aren't necessarily enforceable, but you won't get the grant money if you don't do it a certain way, probably.
Yeah, and mostly that's going to require, you know, be dependent on the grants, and what, you know, the SWCDs are very good at giving that technical assistance, and knowing, you know, based on the soils and the contours and slopes, and what's going to occur, you know, what the best, what the best measures would be for, for putting in, you know, control of, I guess, future erosion, if that's what we're talking about with shoreline.
You know, Mr. Chair, just, just a overall comment on that part, you know, speaking from personal experience, and maybe sensitive to this a little bit, you know, let me look at a personal situation that we have at our property. So we live on the Sauk River Chain of Lakes. Water fluctuates like crazy. We've got, we've got actually a major erosion problem on our property. We purchased it a few years ago, and since purchasing, unfortunately, the previous landowners, you know, moved right down to the shoreline, but we're watching our shoreline erode by the day. And you know what, I left a message for, for Nick, Nick's going to come out, we're going to do something. But I'm looking at this scenario, so get input, because of the slope that we have, we'll, we'll need to work with the DNR, the Sauk River Watershed District, the county, and, you know, maybe soil conservation, because we likely want their input. I'm kind of curious how closely the instruction or guidance from each agency will be, or am I going to be trying to satisfy certain conditions for the county, certain conditions for the DNR, certain conditions for the Watershed District, all of which cost money, which is, you know, obviously a painful process, where you're just trying to prevent something that's the result of wave action from increased boats. And knowing that personal situation, I can relate to a lot of others that, that might be dealing with the same thing. How closely do those groups all have their guidelines aligned?
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg, I'd like to comment on that. So in terms of the official controls or the regulatory authority, it would be Stearns County, and that is, our office deals with anything above the ordinary high, and then, as Scott indicated, anything below the ordinary high is the DNR. We legally don't have jurisdiction below, and they legally don't have jurisdiction above. However, we work very closely with DNR, SWCD. SWC doesn't have rules, as Scott indicated, so we work very closely with them. Nick is on the phone a lot, with Nikki, with Greg. I would, I would be surprised to hear that there's miscommunication between that group of people, and I would also include the Watershed District in that as well. Our ordinance actually exempts permits from, if you're getting a DNR permit, and you're going just a little bit above the ordinary high for rock riprap, then we preempt. We don't, we don't require a permit on top. And conversely, if a soil and water project is being done, it's automatically a minor permit, it's not a major permit. So we, we hear you, and we've, we've made those adjustments to the rules over the years, and I think staff's really good about communicating on that.
Awesome. Cool, cool. I haven't gone through the process all the way yet, but it was one of the things that, that was weighing on my mind, and I know it probably does others that go through the same scenario as they're planning for it, so, cool.
And the good news, the good news, Jason, is if it doesn't go that way for you, you know who to talk to.
Well, right, yes, I do, others may not. So that's one of the, one of the things that, again, why I'm sensitive to it. I fortunately now, through this experience, do know kind of more about the process, but, you know, a few years ago, I would not have, and it's really intimidating for, for a property owner.
Jason, you need to call me tomorrow. It'll be worth your while. Nine years ago, we did a project in Canyonway County, and what I did was, I had the DNR, the Lake Association, the county, the Watershed District, and I'm forgetting somebody. I had all of them stand on their property at the same time, and we went through this, and it was kind of comical, because even they didn't totally understand what part was going to do what they, more, more than 20% of the conversation was the person A argue with person B, who had authority over water, or whatever. And at the end, we worked out something that worked for everybody, and I can tell you that I paid a $50 permit, and I never went to one meeting, and it was a $45,000 project. So, and that's Canyonway County. It's not saying that that wouldn't go here, but I'll talk, I'll tell you more tomorrow, if you call me, but I, that's what I'd do. I'd get all the players, get them all together at one time, because you don't get ping ponged around then. You cut to the chase all at one time.
No, right on. Well, thank you. No need to hijack this anymore.
Item number six, the, if anybody's going to go to that website and look at the permit guidance sheet, God bless you. I don't think, I have a feeling that's going to be pretty bureaucratic, but if we get more comments about it, we might have to do that. So there's no need to touch on that. Seven, we send them a list of construction permits, do we receive information from them?
Commission, Scott Henderson, we don't currently send our list of permit activities. We certainly can't do that. We don't have, I guess, the, the means to have a listserv, like, like you guys do, which we think is fantastic. You know, not every county has those capabilities either.
Well, I think getting to Angie's point, I think it's great if you can share and communicate, one, for the governmental entities, but more importantly, what you just heard from Jason, from the landowners, that everybody's communicating, everybody's on the same page, and not cut off guard by something. Planning Commission members, any other questions, or I assume this won't be our last conversation. We'll certainly have staff contact you when and if we have more questions or input.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, thanks, I guess, thanks for the opportunity to come and, and, you know, talk about our process. Again, I think John started, I think, in 16, and what we've tried to do is not duplicate the efforts, and to not make it confusing for landowners. You know, unfortunately, water, the, all the different regulations is kind of confusing for folks, and that's not our deal. Our, our deal isn't to generate money and all that. It's about protecting that resource the best we can. And so collaborating with, with other entities is where we think we can do the best good, and, and making sure that that loaner, landowner, or applicant is aware of what they can do proactively to, to make sure that they're not going to harm, harm the resource.
Sure, appreciate that. Well, thanks, Scott and John, for joining us, and like I said, we'll certainly be in touch, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Next order of business would be approval of the minutes?
Anytime.
Motion to approve the minutes would be in order?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, this is Jason Crone, to approve the minutes from the April meeting.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the minutes. All those in, well, I'm sorry, we need a second.
All seconded, this is Rich.
Okay, motions made by Jason, second by Rich, to approve the minutes. When I call your name, if you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman? Jason, are you there?
I, sorry, I muted myself.
That's okay. Sean?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The minutes are approved. And then other discussion, Angie, you had the RV concern?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so I emailed out to the commissioner just to reintroduce you to the issue. We've been getting many complaints this spring, as is typical in the springtime, but we did present that issue to the Planning Commission last year. The Planning Commission made recommendations to the board. The board did not enact those changes, because we wanted to hold it in obedience until we completed our comprehensive plan, which, as you know, we're, we're working towards completing. So I just sent it to you to, to read through in your leisure. Those changes to RVs, along with other changes to the ordinance that were a result of the comp plan, such as event centers, accessory dwelling units, etc., that will be, that will be a different discussion. We're not going to try to talk to you about that at a Planning Commission meeting. That would be a special meeting that we have sometime in the next few months.
Would the RV discussion be a Planning Commission discussion? Should we, should we have this on the agenda for next month, for us to review this, and then say, do we want to reaffirm what we recommended, or do you want to have that bigger discussion all at one time?
Mr. Chair, I think at this point, you could wait and have the discussion along with the other ordinance. with the other ordinance changes. You can certainly discuss it if that's the wishes of the, of the planning commission. I don't think, we're, we're definitely not going to move forward with RV changes ahead of other changes to the ordinance. So it's going to be, you know, in the next three, four, six months. And that's what I'm telling the public, that's what the commissioners are aware of. So at this point, you can talk about it if you'd like, otherwise we're going to incorporate it into discussion for the future.
Got it. We may as well wait then when you're ready to have a larger discussion. And then the half CUP application, anything update on that? I think members should be aware that the board acted on that. I know you sent an email, everybody, but that's the one that had the multiple retaining walls and planning commission recommended in February to remove the wall. Any update on that?
Mr. Chair, the, the, as, as you indicated, I did update the planning, the planning commission after the board meeting will likely be in litigation on that issue. And since the board made the final decision on that, if there's any discussion further, it would be likely with the board. At this point, there is no lawsuit, but we believe one would, is coming.
I think we're all interested in it, so if you can keep us informed on that, I think we'd all appreciate that. And then at the last meeting, I wrote a note that the Commissioner Persky raised an issue on that Becker's junkyard when we had the Toms refuse. Any update on that?
I guess I'm telling you, okay. I had a conversation with Troy Freihammer.
You want to, you, you want to state your name and address for the record?
Not my address, just my name. Shelley Benson Environmental Services Director. I'm glad you're getting a kick out of it at this time of night. One of the issues we, we talked about is the existing non-conforming, no, existing legal non-conforming use. So because it was in existence prior to us having zoning regulations, it's, it was allowed to continue, it has been bought out, they have been removing material slowly over time. I've been in conversation with Troy Freihammer about determining if we can get a, a faster process to address this issue. But we have some, we have some issues to address related to vehicles and, and some other things. So it could be nuisance, but we have, we have to address it outside of our normal land use and zoning, it's going to have to come through the nuisance process. And I think that's just a part of what we have to deal with.
Okay.
We may have some incentives that we can work on with them and we've been talking about that as well. So we're working on a few options that we will let you know about as we get them.
And incentives would be like financial helping them?
Incentives as in, what was the loan, was it a loan program? Troy had mentioned a specific, maybe a brownfield site, something along that line where they could look to do some cleanup and have, have some dollars awarded to them for that process. But again, you have to apply for that kind of stuff. I, I don't know what all options are available to them.
Commissioner Persky, this was your issue, anything you want to chime in on?
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. First of all, you know, if, if, I would hate to have them use the excuse where we're waiting for some federal estate money to, to initiate any action. And so I guess I would like to see us come up with some type of plan when, you know, to say that, you know, it's progressing slowly, you know, are they moving one car a month? You know, what's actually going on there? And perhaps even get an inventory because it's not only just the junk cars, I mean, there are other things out there other than trucks and cars as well.
Right. I, I think some of the issue though, is if we want to pursue litigation, then that's a costly endeavor for us. And so we want to, we have to be mindful if, and oftentimes what I've seen is that people are taking, if they're taking some action, then judges like that they're taking some action. Now, is it too slow? I don't know. I, I talked to Troy today and I said, I think we need to have more conversation with Irv and see, you know, what, what kind of a plan can they put together and how, you know, how can we push enough to get them to move a little faster for, to gain some compliance? But you know, again, we have to, to weigh out the, the cost of litigation and the process and how much time we want to put into it. And then the, the outcome, you know, what, what can we do with the legal non-conforming, or yeah, legal non-conforming use? But the use is no longer being expanded and waste management who purchased the property hasn't pushed at, at this point either. So that's another, another mechanism we can, we can explore.
So you say waste management actually moved the property?
I think they have an agreement with them about you, like a non-compete clause. So I know they're not using it for business purposes and I don't know what other kind of financial arrangements. Troy indicated there was something, I don't have my notes in front of me, but we're working on it. We will update you at the board, I talked to Troy about that, so we'll, we'll bring it to the board and have that full conversation.
Yeah, and let, and let's get, and can we get some type of action plan in writing?
Well, that's, that would be the goal, is to find out what, what we can get Irv to do without having to pursue litigation. I always like to do free before I push where we have to spend money. So we'll see what we can get from him at this point.
Okay, but I, I mean, this has gone on for a number of years. I mean, it's, we either address it or we just maintain status quo for, I don't know, 40 years or whatever.
It's my understanding he has been moving some, some material, I just don't know the quantity. We, I can hopefully find that out from Troy.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you that it was there at least 50 years. And what nobody maybe knows, I'm sure Troy probably didn't get out in the woods and look if those radiators and batteries are in those cars yet, because 50 years ago, the standards weren't what they are now. So I have no clue what's, and the missed opportunity unfortunately for the owner is that when the steel prices were up, a lot of the junkyards that I knew, they were cleaning up fast and furious because the, the value of the metal at the time was really, really high. But we've missed that opportunity at this point. But if you don't mind when you update the board, doesn't hurt that, just.
We'll update the planning commission too.
Okay. And can we just get a vehicle count probably from the aerial on that? I'm just curious how many cars are out there.
I, I theoretically, I guess we could.
Okay.
We can try.
I think what we should do, Joe, you and I can go out there and then we'll count them and we'll look at every 10th one to see what's in the radiator. How's that?
Sounds good. The only thing is I might find something I want to pick up.
Anything else from staff or planning commission members?
Yes, Jeff, did we want to put in an official request to the county board to create a work group to study solar farms?
I'm the one that felt so strongly about it and here I would have forgot about it, Rich. Thank you for reminding me of that.
I totally want to make an official request to the county board for June second.
It's up, yep, it's up to the commission members, what do you want to do?
Wouldn't it be just basically studying the decommissioning of the solar farms?
In my opinion, I don't, I think we should do everything. You know, why, I think we should look at the bigger picture. Why are we, why do we have 90-some active permits in play? What are we going to do with the commissioning? How long are these farms really going to be? What is the state working group saying, you know, about these things? You know, I think it's the broader discussion, in my opinion. If we're going to discuss about one thing, we maybe, may as well discuss everything.
Yeah.
And I think with the wind turbine, it was a working group and it was like three to five meetings, I can't remember, staff could tell us. And we got a lot done in a short period of time. We learned a lot about the issue and we changed things because of it, hopefully for the better. So if the planning commission is poised to do that, a motion would be in order to recommend that we create a study group to study.
You know, I'll make that motion that we seek a study group or work group on solar farms in our county, approach the county board on this.
Sure. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made. Yep, motion's been made by Sean, second by Jason Crown to recommend to the county board that we create a study group to study more details of the solar applications that Stearns County is encountering. Normally the working groups that I've been involved in, the staff will, and the board will create them, but typically it's been a commissioner or two, couple of planning commission members, couple of industry types, whoever they wanted advised. So we'll leave that up to somebody smarter than us. Any discussion on the recommendation motion? If not, all those in favor, I suppose I have to do the, let's see how good my memory is, I put my sheet away. Weinermans, if you're for creating the committee, say yes. If you're opposed, say no. Weinerman?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Mossman?
Yes.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. I didn't miss anybody, did I? So the recommendation to the county board is that we create a study group, working group on solar applications. Anything else before the commission, staff, members? Good to see everybody, we're all looking like hippies except for Jason. Hopefully, hopefully we'll see you in June. I'm just going to adjourn it, then we don't have to do the roll call. Meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Good day, everybody.
Have a good one, stay safe.